May 3 meeting of the Penfield Board of Education. This meeting is called to order at 6:33 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second that the board approve the agenda of May 3, 2022 as submitted?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we are going to enter into our annual budget hearing. Good evening. As set by statute, it is now time for holding the 2022-2023 Annual Budget Hearing of the Penfield Central School District. My name is Mark Elidge. I am president of the Penfield Central School District Board of Education. The vote on the board, on the budget for the members, I'm sorry, the vote on the budget and for the members of the Board of Education is in two weeks and not at this meeting. The polls will open at, on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, in the high school gym from nine, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The district has continued to extend voting hours to make it convenient for the residents to vote. Notice of the annual meeting, budget vote, and election have been duly published and according to law in the Daily Record and the Rochester Business Journal. Affidavits will be filed with the minutes of the meeting. It is customary, however, to read a summary of the notice. Summary is as follows. Notice is hereby given that the annual vote and election will be held at Penfield High School on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time. Wherein qualified voters of the district make vote concerning the election of three board members of the Board of Education in one budgetary proposition. Election of the three board members of the, to the Board of Education, Barb Babeyarts and Emily Belcher currently hold these seats, and there is one vacant seat. The candidates running to fill these seats in ballot order are Grant Kirk, Emily Belcher, Dana Meyer, Nicole Doily, and Kristin Khan, Krista Khan. The proposition will further, will be further detailed in the budget summary presentation. I have available the complete notice of the annual meeting, budget vote, and election as printed in the Daily Record and Rochester Business Journal, and will be pleased to show anyone who wishes to see it. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Putnam so he can present the summary of the budget.
Thanks, Mr. Elidge. So this evening in our budget hearing, it is the 2022-23 Proposed Budget Public Hearing. It's an official requirement for all school districts in New York State. Let's just see if I can, here we go. So during this presentation, we're going to talk a bit about the 2022-23 Budget Development Process, our proposed expenditure budget, and our projected supporting revenues for next school year, and then a reminder on May 17 being the vote. And so, as the community may know, and the board certainly does, is that our budget development process takes a long time and starts early in the school year when the board adopts goals and guidelines of what we are focused on for our district. One of the great things in terms of Penfield is that these goals and guidelines have stayed consistent year after year and are really tied to our three district goals: academic achievement, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. And so the goals and guidelines that the board put forth for the district to prepare this budget is around equitable opportunities, college and career readiness, program excellence, class size and staffing, and professional learning, as well as partnerships with families, BOSs, community agencies, and contractual commitments that we are required to fulfill. And then fiscal responsibility is the long-range planning and efficacy in operations, efficiency in operations. And so why do, you know, the why of what we do here in Penfield schools, and we could spend all night, which is not the purpose, is to talk about all the great things about Penfield Central Schools, but just as a high-level look, Penfield High School was named to the 2022 U.S. News &amp; World Report list of best high schools in America. Bay Trail was once again named a national school to watch. Our Penfield Elementary Schools were named among the top schools in the area by Buffalo Business First, based on four years of test scores. And Penfield as a district was named to the list of best communities for music education. So celebrating achievement, our high school graduation rate last year was 98%, and 83% of our 2021 graduates continued on to college after high school. 99% of our 2021 graduates earned a Regents diploma, with 78% earning the Advanced designation. And 100 students, Penfield students and graduates of last year were named as AP Scholars this year. And this data, if you look at it from last year and the years before, remains consistent. One of the great things in Penfield is that consistency of our program and consistency of our goals around academic achievement, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. And we talk about academics, those last bullets are really tied around academics and test scores, which we're always proud of, but this board has been, and this district has been really focused on the whole student for a long time. Embedded in that first goal of academic achievement for many, many years in Penfield has been the development of the whole student. We realize that academics are critically important, but if students don't feel safe, comfortable, part of the program, then academics are always difficult. And so some whole student focus, our Science Olympiad team, the high school team earned third place at Regionals and three medals at States. Our robotics team won this year the very distinguished and difficult Chairman's Award, basically the largest award for this international competition. Dean's List and Excellence in Engineering Awards at the regional competition, and the Chairman's Awards finalist at the world championships. Our DECA team really focused on business and entrepreneurship, won six awards at the state competition, and four students qualified for the international competition. And athletics, which we're always proud of as well, that state championship in boys' volleyball, sectional championships in girls' soccer, boys' volleyball, field hockey, and ice hockey. And so all of these things that really make our students here in Penfield well-rounded, not just academics, not just academics, but also that great piece of feeling connected and our whole student focus. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Driffl to walk through the budget development process and the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Dr. Putnam. Good evening, board, good evening, community, those watching remotely at home. So I'm going to spend some time this evening walking through our budget development process, what the results of that process were for the proposed budget for the community for our vote in two weeks, supporting revenues to support that spending plan, and then, as Dr. Putnam mentioned, some of the details for the May 17 vote. So as Dr. Putnam mentioned, the budget development process is really a long process. Come September, we have fresh faces in the beginning of the year, and we're already thinking about the next year in terms of budget development. So if you look at this pie chart, you can kind of see back in the fall, we put together a budget calendar, we developed some of those early budget factors and goals and guidelines with the board, we walked through some of our reserve planning for all of our restricted funds and fund balance in December. All of our budget requests are submitted by our buildings and our departments, usually before the winter break, and then we really delve into the earnest budget development process after the turn of the calendar in January. So all of our budget presentations throughout the spring are available online. You can go back and take a look at the iterations of the budget that we've developed over the course of the last four or five months. But here we are in the process, coming to some of the final conclusions and requirements. So this is the public hearing, it needs to take place within two weeks of the budget vote, so that's what we're doing. The next step will be the mailing of the budget notice, the newsletter that gets sent out to the community, which will be sent out probably by the end of this week. And then absentee ballots are available prior to the 17th by contacting, contacting the district clerk if you won't physically be in Penfield. So the first thing we start with, with the budget development process is what the enrollment projection is going to look like for next year, as obviously students are central to everything we do here. We can see that we had a dip in the 1920 year, or excuse me, 2021 year, that's a typo, the current year is 2122, where we have just shy of 4,500 students at 4,493. Next year, we project to have 4,526, so a little bit of an increase for next year, but really stable, you can see over the last 10 years. In Monroe County, the live birth rate is at an all-time low. So you can see back around 1990, 30 years ago, that really peaked at about 12,000 live births, and we're all the way down to about 7,500 for the provisional year 2020. What this means relative to our stable enrollment factor is that Penfield has become a little bit of a destination district. We're seeing around us regionally and across the state really drastically declining enrollments at public school districts, but here in Penfield, we're at least seeing a stabilization and a little bit of an increase in the years ahead. And as part of that initial review, also, we take a look at our fiscal standing. So two of the metrics that we utilized are our latest credit rating provided by Moody's. That rating was an AA2 rating, which indicates that we're a high-quality, low-risk entity. In that report, it specifically said that we have a strong financial position and low fixed costs, that AA2 rating is a stronger rating than the median school district. The other metric that we look at is the Office of the State Comptroller's Fiscal Stress Monitoring System. This is a system that was put into place by the comptroller probably about 10 years ago now, and it looks at not just school districts, but every municipality in New York, so counties, villages, towns. It looks at different metrics like fund balance, cash flow, liquidity, financial results from operations. Penfield Central, once again, this year had no designation on that list. The three designations are susceptible to fiscal stress, in moderate fiscal stress, or in severe fiscal stress. So from those two metrics, and pretty positive financial standing. The other thing I want to discuss before we get into the actual nuts and bolts of the budget were the federal funds utilization or planning around the various stimulus packages that were passed by Congress over the last couple of years. The first of which was that CARES Act, which was passed Congress immediately when the pandemic came to light in March of 2020. The second of which was CERSA, that was the Coronavirus Relief and Response Supplemental Appropriations Act, right after Christmas in December of 2020. And then the third was last spring, the American Rescue Plan Act. So I won't walk through all of the details on this, but what the highlights are is that the CARES Act was a supplementation of state aid revenue. It actually took the place of New York State providing aid to Penfield, whereas with CERSA and ARPA, those funds were meant to be a supplement to current operations. So the way that we have to utilize those funds is via one-time investments, new initiatives, new programming, short-term offerings that would alleviate, you know, concerns that were brought about by the pandemic. They cannot go towards, just as a supplement to the general fund operations. And again, this will be on the website, so if you're curious and taking a look at it in detail, it'll be available. So let's first begin with the proposed expenditures. So this is where does the money go for Penfield Central School District. The first way of looking at the budget is by function, so this is kind of cost centers that are around the district that align to the New York State reporting mechanisms. The first is the Board of Education costs. So as a reminder, Board of Education members are volunteers, they do not get paid, but there are costs associated with their legal business, so things like the production of tonight's meeting and the various board functions streaming on PTV, the election workers at the May meeting, BOSs services, any professional development that the board needs, material supplies, the district clerk expenses, items of that nature. Central office relates to the superintendent's office, the business and finance office, the human resources office, the office of communication, and all the associated professional services that we are required to provide, so the auditors, any legal costs go through here, records management is identified in here. The central services of the school district are defined as the operations and maintenance. So this is everything related to our buildings and grounds departments, all of the folks that work there, their wages, the utilities to our buildings, so natural gas, electric, water, telephones, any contractual costs that we have associated with that are identified in there. We're seeing a big increase there, it's one of our big increases this year. Our Director of Facilities, Mr. English, gave a presentation around his budget back in March, and the item that we were really seeing were large increases in utilities, particularly on natural gas. So just in the course of a year, natural gas futures have tripled relative to what they were last spring, so substantial costs increased there. Special items relates primarily to BOSs administrative costs, but it also includes the various insurances that the district is required to carry. Curricular administration is the instructional administration that's not associated with the classroom instruction. So this is all of our building principals, all the folks that work in the building main offices, it's our Office of Equity and Access, it's our Office of Curriculum and Instruction, it's our curriculum directors, all of those folks. The teaching, regular school, 21 function relates to all of the classroom instruction across the K through 12 spectrum, so all of the teachers, materials costs, textbooks, any BOSs costs that facilitate some of those in terms of software or any other kind of needs like that. This also includes tuition for charter school or out-of-district placements. That represents just about our, along with benefits, our largest cost center for the district. Function 22, special programs, is a combination of a couple of different things. One, it's our programs for students with special needs, so it also relates to intervention services around speech, around reading, math, and special ed settings across the district. Special programs also includes our career and technical education here within districts, so our business teachers, our technology teachers, our family and consumer science settings. And it also includes our occupational education programs that are offered through our local BOSs, so the new vision programs, some of those vocational training programs that our students are taking advantage of. Those are expensive programs, and we're seeing an uptick in the interest in some of those opportunities, so that's why we're seeing a jump in cost there of about 700, or excuse me, 1.3 million dollars. Instructional media relates to our libraries and our technology, instructional technology programs. Pupil services is everything kind of, as Dr. Putnam mentioned, that whole student perspective, so that's our guidance counselors, it's the psychologists, the social workers, it's the nurses in our buildings, it's the extracurricular clubs and all the athletics that we offer as a district within that pupil services domain. Transportation is obvious, that's our, it's the cost of the office that runs the transportation department, all of our drivers and attendants, tires, oil, gasoline, everything related to the transportation department. Registration just relates to the office that's held by our census enumerator, district registrar. Employee benefits is the biggest area of the budget, so that contains all of the fringe benefits for all the employees of the district, so that includes health insurance, dental insurance, contributions to the state retirement programs, premiums for workers' compensation, premiums for any unemployment insurance, disability insurance, and then associated administrative costs of those programs. Debt service relates to principal and interest payments on prior-year borrowings for old capital projects, down this year, a little under half a million dollars in accordance with our debt service schedule. And then finally, inter-fund transfers are transfers from the general fund that move to other funds, so there's a small transfer to the lunch fund, the school cafeteria fund, and then a transfer to the special aid fund to cover special programming during the summer, which is not fully aided by the state. So you can see all up all in, the projected spending plan for next year is a little over 109 million dollars, so 109, 153,415 dollars. It's an increase dollar-wise of 4.8 million dollars, or a year-over-year percentage of Another way of looking at this budget is via the accounting object code, so the first and largest of which is our personnel, so this is all of our employees' salaries and hourly wages, projected to increase about 2.4 million dollars, or 5% year-over-year. Like many entities, and the board's familiar with these conversations, we are dealing with a labor shortage. There are a record amount of job postings and unemployment's at a record low, so there's some discordance with the markets that we're feeling as well. So we're feeling wage pressures, not only from labor shortage, but also the continuing increases to the New York State minimum wage laws. Contractual is everything that we rely on from outside agencies, so that's everything related to, for instance, our utilities, that relates to tuition payments that we have to make to other entities, anything that we don't do here internally ourselves. Increase of about 500,000 dollars next year, and a couple hundred thousand dollars of that is strictly tied up in building utility costs. BOSs, we did a deep dive at our March 22 meeting of all the BOSs costs associated for next year, looking at a 5% increase in those programs, or 675,000 dollars. Equipment and supplies is the equipment, equipment replacement plan that we have for the district, so that's everything from our facilities department trucks. And then supplies looks at everything from gasoline to fuel to copy paper, inventory, custodial supplies, all of those sort of things, just a small increase next year of 1.7% or 45,000 dollars in that room. Again, debt service, as I mentioned before, seeing that reduction, employee benefits up over 5%. The biggest factor there is the health insurance for next year. We do participate in a consortium of Monroe County school districts to leverage our buying power, but we're still seeing a 7% increase in health insurance for next year, so about where we've been in the past 10 years in terms of medical trend, but more than where we were last year. And then those inter-fund transfers. And then again visually, if you slice it in a pie chart there at the bottom, you can really quickly see that staff makes up about three-quarters of our budget. We always say that we're in the people business in education, and you can quickly see it there. The other way of looking at our school operating budget is the New York State component analysis, so this is in a three-part budget format, so it looks at capital requirements, so this is everything related to the buildings and grounds department, it's our debt service that we owe on our buildings, all of those utilities and folks, the administrative costs, so it's everything related to that central office, everything related to the curricular administration, and then programming is everything else, so that includes transportation and then all of the instructional offerings that we provide. If you look, you can see where we are in the current year versus what we project to be next year, and then the prorated share of costs associated with that. So the costs for administration are up 285,000 dollars, the costs for the program are up about four and a half million dollars, and then the capital costs are only up about 32,000 dollars due to that associated drop-off of debt service. As a prorated share of costs, administrative costs are down a little bit, program costs are up about three-quarters of a percent, and then those capital costs year-over-year are down relative about half a percent. So the 4.61% increase, as we've discussed in the spring, is more than we've had in about 10 years, it's a bigger spending increase than what we've seen, but at the same time, it's not unprecedented. So if we go back to those mid-2000 years, we can kind of see some bigger budgets as well in there, as there were some effects of, you know, the kind of the shock waves of the stock market crash in 2001, and then you can see kind of the waves of the stock market crash in 2008, some of that more austerity kind of thinking. But what I had reiterated to the board throughout the spring is that we weren't alone in seeing these cost increases. And on this slide, you can see the Monroe County proposed budgets for next year and where we stand within that spectrum, so you have a couple districts that are seeing budget increases of seven and a half percent. Our 4.6 is kind of in that average domain, so again, you're seeing larger increases than in prior years, and even in the lower range of the spectrum, you have districts at 3%, when 3% in some prior years was some of the highest budget increases that you saw. So on the expenditure side of things, costs are increasing, no question. We're controlling absolutely everything that's within our ability. This budget does maintain all staffing levels, so we have close to 1,000 employees that work for us in various capacities, so there's no budgeted reductions in that regard. It maintains all of our opportunities for students and staff, so all of the professional learning and investment that we put into our staff of those 1,000 folks, plus those 4,500 students. Dr. Putnam joked at our last meeting that if a student, if we have a student idea and they want to start a club, we'll figure out some way to do it, and that's one of the things here we're really proud of at Penfield, that we always make things happen that are student-centered. So the other good news is we're well within our available revenue constraints, as I'll touch upon in a moment, but that's where the money goes. So projected revenues, where does the money come from? So school districts are financed primarily by two mechanisms in New York State: local real property taxes and state education aid. For Penfield, our local revenue, those local property taxes, make up about 63% of the budget, so about two-thirds. That also includes the STAR rebates that folks get on behalf of the New York State, New York State government, and then also any pilot payments. So those are payments in lieu of taxes that the County of Monroe's Industrial Development Agency gives to new developers, new development, as a tax break for new development. For us, New York State education aid makes up 32%, so essentially between those two things, you get about two-thirds and one-third, and then we also receive county sales tax of 4% from both Monroe County and Wayne County. All of the revenue is about 1% of our budget, and then any assigned fund balance that we apply is less than 1%. So first, I'm going to walk through some of these main things and talk about the New York State budget. So the New York State budget process, if you go back and look at our budget presentations throughout the spring, really starts in January, when the governor gave her executive budget proposal, and then there's deliberations in Albany until they have a legislative budget come April 1st. The good news for this New York State budget is that the legislature did commit to the continued three-year phasing of the foundation aid formula, which I'll touch upon in another moment. It did fully fund the expense-based aids that we receive as a school district, so for instance, transportation aid and BOSs aid, in the current year, for every dollar that we spend on transportation, next year, an aid received will get about 70 cents back on the dollar, so that funds part of our operations. It included the expansion of UPK funding, so we're really excited here at Penfield to be offering a UPK program for the first time come this fall. It did institute a one-time tax rebate credit for homeowners, that I'll discuss in a little bit of detail. It did legislate the mandated transition to zero emission buses, so this means that all new buses in 2027 need to be electric vehicles, and then all buses in the fleet by 2035 need to be those non, no emissions electric vehicles. There was also included a one-year waiver for retiree earnings, so typically retirees can only work so many hours as a sub after they retire to not affect their New York State pension, but due to the ongoing labor shortage, the state has lifted that cap for one year. So this is what the New York State budget meant for us dollars-wise, so you can see in the first column there is what we're actually receiving in the various aid categories for the current year, what the governor had proposed back in January, and then what we actually received from the legislature in their April budget. So I won't walk through all of these necessarily, but the top-line number is that foundation aid number. You can see that we're moving from 15.8 million dollars to 19.4 million dollars, or a 22% increase. They did include that UPK funding, we do get that BOSs and transportation funding, like I mentioned. I'll quickly discuss that excess cost aid relates to services associated with providing special programs to students with disabilities. IMA is for instructional materials aid, so the state gives us a little bit of money for textbooks, software, library materials, and hardware technology, and then building aid that we receive. If you remember back on the expense side of the budget, we had debt service of about 5.6 million dollars for next year, and you can see that the offsetting building aid that we're going to receive for next year more than makes up for that. So here's that New York State foundation aid. If you're not familiar with foundation aid, it went into effect back when Eliot Spitzer was the governor of the state. Shortly thereafter, he left office and the New York State government went fully a part of the Great Recession there back in 2008, so the commitment to foundation aid was never fulfilled. Now, last year, the legislature has decided that over a three-year period, they would fully commit this, so what you can see here is the foundation aid that was paid to Penfield in the left column, the foundation aid that was actually due to Penfield, and then the annual gap. So you can see that annual gap started at 3 million dollars, it swelled all the way up to 5 million dollars, 7 million dollars a couple years ago, 6 million dollars, but what we're starting to finally see is traction there in the left side, that we went from, you know, in the 2020-21 year where aid was frozen at that 13.6 million dollars due to the uncertainty around due to the uncertainty around the global pandemic. We started to bump up considerably last year, and then we're starting to bump up considerably for next year. So what this means for next year, which would be the third year of that phased-in approach, is that we would be due $22.9 million. So even though we're still seeing the significant increase this year, we're still short $3.5 million relative to the formula. So it's something that we'll keep an eye on in our advocacy with our legislators come next year. The next thing I want to discuss is the local funding mechanism. So back about 10 years ago, 11 years ago now, 2011, real property tax law was amended to create a tax cap formula. So this is a local levy limit formula that derives how much money school districts can raise from their community that are only seeking 50% approval. If they choose to break that tax cap, they would require a super majority, 60% approval. I'll walk through our calculation, but it's, over the years, it has always been kind of colloquially called the 2% tax cap. And I'll show why the 2% tax cap is not exactly accurate. So you start with your prior year levy. I should note that our prior year levy this year is the same as it was last year because our levy was 0% for the current school year. You add in your tax-based growth factors. So this is a number that comes from New York State that dictates in your school district boundaries, what was the permitted growth, the new assessment value. So you multiply that, you add in any prior year pilots. So last year, we had two pilots that brought in $163,000 of revenue. You subtract any prior year exclusions, of which we did not have any. You multiply then by the allowable growth factor. So this is where the 2% cap comes from. This 2% levy growth factor is tied to CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, which is inflation, the primary unit of inflation. So in the 2021 school year, the average, the composite CPI was 4.7%. Because it's bound to just that 2% figure, this number, you would say, okay, the school district needs to raise money in accordance with inflation, right? That's just kind of a common sense notion, but we can only go up to 2%. So that's why that shows us that 1.02% and not as 1.047%. You then subtract any pilots for the coming year. So we do have some pilots for the coming year, estimated revenue of $198,000. You add in any available carryover. So carryover is a mechanism in the formula whereby if you do not levy all the way up to the cap in the prior year, you can bring some of that money into your current year calculation. That brings us to our total cap this year of $69,334,282. So that would have represented an opportunity to increase revenue, $2.4 million or 3.64%. However, you can see there with the graphic, the board chose to omit the available carryover. So removing that $1,023,000 from the levy for this year to bring our proposed levy to support this budget to $68,311,079. So that is a proposed revenue increase of $1.4 million or 2.11%. And then you can see in that tax cap era, what the Penfield School District levy increases were on average over the last 10 years. So the 2.12% for the proposed school year for next year is about in line with where we've been. We're kind of averaging around 2.2% including the current year 0% levy. And then here, again, you know, to zoom out and see the context of where we are relative to all the other Monroe County school districts, you can see that our proposed levy increase next year of 2.12% is on the lower side of what the county is looking at this year. So you have some districts that are over 3%, up near 3%. Our 2.12 is kind of trending towards the lower side of the county increases in levy. So we have that tax cap formula that allows us with 50% approval to levy up to 3.64%. We are choosing to levy a 2.12% increase for next year. And that's kind of where our abilities end. So we as the taxing jurisdiction, the school district, set the tax levy. And then the tax rates are derived from other forces, first of which being the town assessments. So we have six towns within the Penfield Central School District across two different counties. And then the state comes in and looks at those assessments relative to what they believe is fair market value and applies an equalization rate. And then it ends up producing tax rates for the school district. So this is an infographic, I hope you can see it, but I found it helpful in the past, I've shown it in prior presentations to illustrate kind of what happens here with that equalization rate being a factor for equity. It's for fairness. So in school district where you have multiple towns such as Penfield, you can look at two different houses. So let's use Brighton and Penfield, for instance, where the same house, it's wood on the open market, sell for $250,000. In Town A, the equalization rate is 74% because the assessment of that house is only $185,000. So applying a tax rate of $27.03 per $1,000 of assessed value to that home would bring that homeowner's tax bill to $5,000. And then in Town B, because the assessment is at $250,000, the state says, yep, you're in line with market value, your equalization rate is 100%. The town tax rate in that town is therefore lower at that $20 per $1,000 worth of assessed value, meaning that the two houses have the exact same tax bill, even though one has an assessment that's $65,000 lower. So this year, we have, I need to stress, these are tentative levels of assessment. We have two towns that are looking to do revaluations within our school district boundaries. So Penfield and Mastodon there. The other four towns are seeing reductions in their tentative level of assessment because the housing values have increased, outpaced the assessments in those localities. So you have Brighton going down from 95% to 89%, Penfield coming up from 85% to 100%. Perrington going down from 93% to 80%, Pittsford going down from 91% to 82%. Mastodon coming up from that 80 to the full revale, 100%. And then Walworth going from 100 on their revale last year down to 94%. So in a locality where Penfield as a town has such an outsized impact, it's 82% of the assessed value of our school district, we can see that it has a really demonstrable effect on the tax rates. So if we were to set the tax rates tonight, which we don't, the school board doesn't set tax rates until their meeting in August because the assessment data is not finalized until July. But based on the preliminary data that the towns have given us as of their March assessments, the tax rates would look like this for our six localities. The top line there, Penfield would go from $27.10 all the way down to $20.79. So a reduction in $6.31 per $1,000 worth of assessed value or a decline of 23%. Perrington would go up a dollar or up 5% relative to percentage. Pittsford would stay about equal. Brighton would decline a little bit, a little less than a dollar per $1,000 worth of assessed value or 3.65%. Mastodon with their revaluation process would see a big decline in their tax rate based on those increased house values. And then Walworth would see a small reduction as well. So the true value rate looks at if all six of the towns at the same time were at 100% of equalized value, the current year tax rate would have been 2304. Next year, based on these projections, we'd be at $20.80, which would be a reduction of $2.24 of $1,000 assessed value or 9.72%. And you can see just in the bar chart below that that tax rate would be by far the lowest that we've had in a very long time based on some of those soaring assessment data. The other thing that I mentioned earlier that residents, homeowners should be aware of is that the governor had proposed a homeowner's tax rebate credit in her executive proposal in January. And the legislature did adopt it in their legislative budget in April. So this is a one-time credit. It's not a multi-year program like the tax relief credit program was a couple of years ago, back in 2016 all the way to 2019. It's currently only on the books for one year. And here's how it works. It's based on your STAR projection. So whether or not you're on the basic STAR program or the enhanced STAR program, there's a factor for your rebate. For the basic STAR program, it would be stratified by income tier. So the tiers there on the left are under $75,000 of adjusted gross income for your household, 75 to 150, 150 to 200, 200 to 250. You're not eligible for the program if you have household income above $250,000. So the basic STAR projection based on the earliest data that we have from the state in Penfield would be $707. But if you're a, so that you'd still get your $707 STAR either exemption or rebate check, depending on which program you're on now. But then in addition, you would get this check in the fall of $1,150 if you have a household below $75,000 in value. The rebate factors decline as you move down the stratified income tiers. But I think what this points out is that even though some folks are seeing revaluations in Penfield whereby it looks like the calculations show that they're going to be paying more than they've been paying in years past, this homeowner's tax rebate credit should alleviate some of those concerns or at least something to be aware of come fall and school tax time. And then again, for that enhanced STAR rebate, so you have to meet the income and age tiers for that. That's currently projected to be $1,658, the normal rebate. But then the extra rebate credit would be a little over $1,000 because it's 66% of that value. So we talked about the different functional tiers of the expenditure side of the budget. We talked about the local funding, the state funding. I also mentioned real quickly that county sales taxes we receive from Monroe County and Wayne County projected to increase a bit, a lot for next year, 8%. The one thing we do want to watch is that the county did vote to repeal the gas tax share of the county sales tax that goes into effect on June 1st and ends in December. So that might have an impact based on our budget. All other revenue includes everything else that the district receives in terms of admissions to games, interest on our bank accounts, driver Zed. The big one is health services. So we have a couple of private schools within our locality and we're required to provide health services to those districts. And then we bill back the districts where the students live for those services. The other thing there is the assigned fund balance. So traditionally, assigned fund balance is a little bit of what you take from your current year budget and apply it to next year's budget. We've always been sort of around $2 million here at Penfield. But based on the noticeable increases, the market increases we've seen in state aid in the last two years, we've been able to bring those assigned fund balance numbers down. So in the current year, it's $450,000, next year all the way down to $241,000. So you can see the balanced budget there reflecting all of the expenditures and revenues. Takeaway being that with that New York State education aid being so flush this year, we don't need to levy up to the cap. So you can see 2% on the levy side and 10% increase expected on the education aid side. So the annual statewide vote and election is always on the third Tuesday in May. So that's coming up in two weeks' time from tonight. It'll take place here at Penfield High School over in the gymnasium. So that's from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, as Mr. Elidge noted. Requirements are you need to be a US citizen, 18 years of age, and at least a resident of the Penfield Central School District for 30 days. As I did mention earlier, absentee ballots are available if you cannot make it on that day by contacting our district clerk, Sharon Arcfitts. There are only two propositions on the ballot for voter consideration this year. It's that annual operating budget that we just discussed. Again, tax cap compliant, so therefore only a 50% approval required to pass the budget. And we have Board of Education seats this year available. We have three seats. We have two three-year expiring terms and one one-year term for the vacant seat. And with that, the proposed budget hearing, turn it over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Dan. We now enter a comment period for the budget hearing. So this comment period is specifically for the information presented today on the budget. There will be, the normal public speaking time will take place later in the meeting. So if anyone would like to comment or question on the budget, please come up to the microphones and state your name and address. All right, seeing none, I'll make a brief closing statement. These past two years have been difficult for all of us. Juggling work responsibilities, home life, and all the stressors COVID-19 has brought us has left us wondering when we'll get back to normal. While we're beginning to see some sense of normalcy, we understand the sacrifices everyone in our community has been making and how challenging this pandemic has been. We especially want to thank our parents, teachers, and staff who despite all of their concerns have worked together to ensure our students have been supported and continue to learn in a safe environment. In addition to dealing with COVID, we have continued conducting important business of the district, including developing a proposed budget for the 2022, 23 school year. Overall, the budget proposal is $109,153,415, which represents a 4.6% increase over the current year's budget. This increase reflects the escalation in costs for everything from fuel to supplies. On the revenue side of the budget, additional state funding has presented us with the opportunity to offer a budget with a 2.1% levy increase, which is well below the district's allowable tax levy limit of 3.64%. We know many families have been impacted financially by the pandemic and felt that it was important to keep the levy increase as low as possible while still maintaining our programs. In addition to the general fund budget, there are three Board of Election seats up, I'm sorry, Board of Education seats up for election at the May vote. Two seats will be for a full three-year terms and the third seat will be for a one-year term, which is really the completion of the existing three-year term of the vacant seat. Please remember to go vote between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM on Tuesday, May 17th in the Penfield High School Gymnasium. With that, the annual budget hearing has ended. Thank you. Okay. It takes us to our regular meeting. It is recommended that the board approves the following consent agenda. The approval of the minutes of April 12th, 2022, and April 26th, 2022, as submitted. The acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education. The acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education. The acceptance of the recommendation from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes. And a request to approve the bidders that you have seen listed there. And then the approval of the request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. So may have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approves a consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report. It is recommended that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending March 31st, 2022 be approved. So may have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no special reports today, which brings us to our student representative report. Lila Harvey, Ms. Lila?
Good evening. So to begin with PHS. So these first two weeks of May are AP exam weeks where many upperclassmen are busy taking a variety of exams for college credit. Key Club has finished their nursing home activity kits and will be delivering them to nursing home residents in a couple of weeks. The junior class had their prom last Saturday night at Locust Hill, which was a fun class event with dancing, appetizers, and ice cream. Decision Day for our seniors was on Monday. The Regional Best Buddies Walk was last Saturday during which PHS won the Team Spirit Award. DECA competed at Nationals in Atlanta. And the robotics team competed at the World Championship in Houston and was a finalist for the Chairman's Award, meaning that they are among the top six robotics teams in the world. Varsity baseball won 3 to 0 against Brighton last night. And also last night was senior night for girls varsity lacrosse. At Bay Trail, the Girls Up Club had a meeting with a guest from the Bethany House. The Bethany House is a private homeless shelter that provides aid to women in need. And the All Men Choir Midtown Express performed with both Uptown Express, the All Men Choir at the high school, and Barrel of Monkeys last week. At Harris Hill, students and best buddies watched a movie together to spend some time. And Mrs. Swanson's class drew pictures to celebrate visiting author Lauren Long. At Indian Landing, students created art projects using recycled materials to finish up celebrating Earth Month. And third graders are using modeling clay to create miniature dishes from the different cultures they have been studying. At Cobles, fifth graders are learning all about different instruments and having fun testing them out. And finally, at Scribner, kindergarten- And finally, at Scribner, kindergartners went on their very first field trip to go bowling. They were met by some of the members of the PHS bowling team and spent the afternoon having fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Board members, any questions?
We all just wanted to go bowling with the kindergartners.
I would agree.
Like, that sounded fun.
It does sound fun.
I'm sure they would beat me. I'm a really bad bowler.
Can I comment on that? Actually, my son joined them.
Oh, he did?
And one of the kids came home and said they were so exhausted. So it was very funny to have them take that teacher perspective of working with little kids. So it was kind of cute.
Yeah, that's great. Awesome.
Good. Thank you. Which brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam.
So we have this evening, student and staff honors, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Maloney for a 2022-2023 instructional update. As always, Ms. Harvey, I know, I will announce that Ms. Harvey does need to leave and has permission from everybody, and thank you because Ms. Harvey is taking six AP exams this year and has some studying to do. So we wish you luck and know you do all right.
Thank you, Lila.
This is good, Ms. Harvey, because you always show me up with your presentation. So at least I get pictures. Thank you. So just again, the Indian Landing Student Council, they did raise over sixteen hundred dollars for change for Ukraine. Proceeds were donated to UNICEF's Fund for Ukrainian Children. What I love about this in the image is even something like a change collection at an elementary school becomes a math lesson. And so they literally counted every single penny, every nickel, every ten cent piece, and went all the way up to find that. So learning through service is really cool. Our robotics championship, as we mentioned in our budget presentation, as well, is Ms. Harvey is just really proud of our team. Fifteen-eleven was named one of six finalists for the Chairman's Award at the World Championship in Houston, and congratulations to the entire team on this outstanding honor. And so hopefully, our robotics team will be with us in May to present. They typically come to a board meeting and show off that robot and talk about their world championship attendance in Houston. All Greater Rochester Winter Teams, I'm not going to read through every name because they are in your agenda, but just kudos to PHS senior Sean Smith was named Player of the Year for Hockey on the All Greater Rochester Winter Teams. And Hockey had just an incredible season this year, as many of our teams did. And also earning first-team honors were Dominic, Andrew, and for Hockey, Owen Fox for Hockey, and Kieran McGee for Wrestling. All of our other second-team honors are in your agenda. I encourage you to take a look. Just really proud of our students beyond academics, what they can do on those athletic fields and ice. National Teacher Appreciation Week is this week, so we'd just like to take a moment as a district to have this opportunity to give special thanks to our teachers for their dedication and hard work, especially during these challenging times. Our teachers have been unwavering in their dedication to our students and their continued learning despite the many challenges posed by this pandemic. We are incredibly proud of Team Penfield and truly thank you for all the efforts on behalf of our students. So this year's Teacher Appreciation Week is teaching is a work of the heart. And just again, thank you so much, both as a superintendent, as a parent in this district. Our teachers are absolutely incredible. Thank you. It's also this week, National School Lunch Hero Day, and we wanted to recognize our food service staff who prepare healthy meals for our students every day and serve all of our students with a smile. They truly are the behind-the-scenes heroes who make sure our students are well-fed and ready to learn. As Dan had referenced in the budget presentation, most people know the federal government created lunches and breakfast were free this year for all. As of now, I think that changes for next year. We're hoping that Hail Mary Pass comes in. But what that meant for our food service was more meals ever going out the door and just really, really happy for that. And just put my dad hat on, which meant I didn't have to make lunch at all this year, so I really appreciate that. But my kids will learn quickly next year that they'll have to make their lunch. But again, just thank you so much. That job is difficult and truly, for a lot of our kids, it's a meal, and for others, it really is. They don't eat breakfast and they don't eat lunch, and having it there hot and ready is huge to make sure that they can learn. It's also National School Nurse Day next week, and we want to take time to celebrate and recognize the contributions of our school nurses. We can't thank them enough for what they're doing to ensure the health and safety of our students and staff during these trying times, and they are all truly appreciated today and every day. And I can't help but just note that our school nurses have always been professionals. They're RNs. They could work elsewhere, and they work in schools for lots of reasons, but the last two years, they really have become the voice. I mean, coming to the table, understanding the changes, working through all of the COVID protocol changes, they've been incredible. We can't thank them enough for the work they've done. That is up for my updates, and I'll turn, oh, no, I have, sorry. Those are my staff honors. I have one slide, and I can't wait to not have to do COVID updates, but we're getting, hopefully, the end of updates. But there was a major change since our last board meeting and want the community to know. And this, like with everything, will impact some more than others, but we want to be upfront and honest in why this change impacts schools. So we learned a couple of weeks ago that Friday, we learned last week, that Friday, last Friday, was the last day that the New York State Department of Health school specialist positions were going to be in place in Monroe County. So that was a New York State position. We had two school specialists that were assigned in Monroe County, and what that meant was whenever there was a question about COVID from the nurses, they could have, pick up the phone and call somebody who was a specialist in the school requirements. Not just calling anybody at Monroe County Department of Health, but calling somebody who understood the requirements for schools. And they really, they took and fielded hundreds of calls a day, I'm sure, especially when our numbers were really high, and they were wonderful. But New York State stepped away from that, as we're seeing, hopefully getting out of COVID. You know, it's still here, it's going to be here, but it's no longer a role. So the impact for Monroe County Department of Health is they were sharing with school districts, you know, principals and nurses and district office, they were providing a list of confirmed positives in the morning and in the afternoon. And it was typically broken up in three emails. So some of us got six emails from the Monroe County Department of Health COVID team every day since the pandemic really started. We were able to, it would only, it would list staff and student by name, so we could monitor and keep track and support. Because the school specialist role ended, this email from Monroe County Department of Health will also end. The impact for us as a district is that's how we were able to confirm, so we could put accurate numbers up on the Penfield Central School District COVID update page. So every Wednesday morning, our district would put up the confirmed cases of the week before. So we could say how many active cases we have by building, students, and staff. We are no longer able to do that without that accurate data coming. So our local Penfield webpage will no longer update on Wednesday mornings. However, schools across the state are still required to provide daily updates of COVID positives to the New York State Report Card site. So we've all known in the community, we've seen, we've talked about it at every board meeting, is that's been a shift from now that you can self-test. You can do a self-test at home, and you can call the nurse's office and say, my child's out with COVID. And then if we hear that, we don't have to confirm it with a test, we can just update it to the New York State dashboard. So that will still be running for the foreseeable future. The other piece is, doesn't impact students, but the New York State staffing mandate is still in place. So all staff who work for a school district have to be tested once a week for COVID, or they can opt out by showing a vaccination proof. And so that staffing test mandate, sorry, the staff testing mandate remains in place, and we do have to share with New York State through a system positive cases. We used to have to share all cases, positive and negative. Now we just have to share positive cases. So that doesn't impact the community, but is what the school district has to do to make sure we're following that state mandate. And we have one slide for COVID because those are those changes. If you ever have any questions, you can always reach out to your nurse, who is amazing, or you can call my office as well. Questions are on my one slide?
Board members, any questions? Emily?
So will we still continue to get those exposure emails?
That's a great question. Yes. So parents will still, parents and staff will still get the exposure emails, just letting you know that there was an exposure in a classroom. And so I appreciate you mentioning that and asking that, Emily, because we still have the KN-95 mask, both pediatric size and regular size in all of our nurses' offices. And when you get that email as a parent, you are encouraged or recommended by the Monroe County Department of Health to mask, but it's not a requirement. But for parents who want to or students who want to mask, absolutely can do that. And we continue to receive at-home rapid COVID tests from the state, and we have those in the main offices. So if you do get one of those emails and you want your child to pick up a test, they can stop to the main office. And we're going to continue our weekly distribution as long as those tests keep coming from the state. I think it's probably fair to say, I don't know how much longer they're going to be coming from the state, but I know that our libraries have tests, and I know that tests are also, you have to pay for them, but they're on the shelves at, all over, whereas like six months ago, you couldn't find a test. So we'll keep sending those home, and if anybody wants one, you can always stop by the main office or have your child stop by the main office. So it continues to be, I just got a question today about masking and whether we're going to require masking. Just like in the beginning of this, we're going to do what's required by the state. So right now, it's still masking optional. Our students have been incredible with that, as have our staff. So if people want to mask, they can. If they want a KN-95, they can pick one up in the nurse's office. But as of now, it is not a requirement for everybody in the district, and I don't, speaking as superintendent, I don't see that changing between now and June. But right now, it is still optional to mask.
Tom, the, we've learned that vaccines seem to have an expiration date, which is why there are the boosters. Do you know if there's anything mandated about with the staff regarding being tested or showing proof? So I'm curious about how boosters play into that, if at all.
Sure. So this is where I put the preliminary that you've heard me say many times, that I am an educational doctor and not a COVID doctor.
Yes.
So I can just tell you what like the law is and what the requirements are.
Yes, and that's what I'm asking.
And you know that. I can't, you know, it's a choice to me.
Well, I mean, well-
But we have heard nothing. There was a while back, some language from the state, this was months ago, that in order to be fully vaccinated, you had to be boosted. They stepped away from that.
Okay.
So it continues to be for the opting out of the requirement testing for all school staff across the state. It's just either one vaccine at Johnson &amp; Johnson or two for the others.
Okay.
So that hasn't changed.
Okay.
I have not heard anything of that changing or boosters becoming a part of the requirement. And I think it's important because it's another piece where our nurses were incredible, our administrators. We created an internal COVID team to manage that because just simply keeping track of who was vaccinated, who wasn't, who has to test, who's opting out. If we threw boosters in there as well, we were very concerned about trying to keep track of all that.
Yeah.
It really sort of, COVID for lots, and Mark mentioned this too, like, everybody's been impacted by this across our community, regardless of what your role is. And as schools, it was asking us to do things we've never done before because sort of that health piece is not necessarily what we're in the business for.
Yeah, that was kind of my concern, like, how would you keep track of that? And, you know, who, like, is there data collection and all that? So nothing has changed on that front.
No.
So we're going to keep it as it is.
Yep.
Great.
And right now, it's mandated that way.
Yes.
So it's possible that either at the end of the school year or between now and the end of the school year, the state could waive the testing requirement, testing mandate, but we haven't heard anything or seen anything like that. Although I think everybody knows that I typically, through COVID, we all learned when the governor gave a press conference. So the days of like schools kind of knowing what was happening or getting a little bit of a heads up, this year was much more, we were all learning at the same time and then trying to figure it out as quickly as we could.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I just want to say, you've talked about it, Tom, we've had two years of COVID, and, you know, normal is kind of an elusive thing, but we're at a place more, we're not reacting, we're more acting more with forethought. But the main thing is, it's appropriate as this year runs, winds down that we recognize those three groups that you mentioned, because they did things they never expected to do in their careers.
Yep.
Teachers doing virtual, the food service staff basically making sure students were served and fed when their incomes, their family's incomes were in jeopardy, and the nurses, who are used to just basically dealing with flus and head lice and a lot of daily things. And they were really front and center in making sure everyone stayed safe. So very appropriate.
And I never want to forget, Mark, but I appreciate you bringing up food service because like when schools were required by the state to shut down, our food service showed up every day to make sure that kids had breakfast and lunch.
Yeah.
And that was amazing. There were a lot of people here, were coming in and out, but they were here every day handing out those meals. And for some families, it was just nice to have like a normal, you know, like tacos in a bag for a day or French toast sticks that our kids love. But for other families, it was the difference between being able to eat or not. And so it really was amazing, and they never, they jumped in and did it, and did it well. So appreciate that.
Mark, excuse me, I have one more comment.
Certainly.
Regarding that. And if you remember back in the beginning of this horrible nightmare, everything was scary.
Yeah.
Like, nobody knew if they were going to get sick, how they could protect themselves or anything like that, and these workers showed up day after day, did their job, they did it for the kids. It's just remarkable.
I agree.
So I'm really glad that we were able to recognize that.
And I think it's just as a note is that, you know, our COVID numbers as a county are still going up. So it is something that's there. We're not over it. But I think, you know, we're all watching, we all have a different feel, there's sort of a spectrum of how people feel about it. And that's where I am glad as a district, we're at a point with the state stepping away from mandates on masking and making it choice.
Yeah.
And so anybody who wants to can absolutely do so. And I think that's, you know, it took a while to get there, but what we follow, what we do as a board and district, we're required by law to follow those mandates, and I think we're in a spot there. But I want to be honest is that we're seeing, if you're a parent, you're probably getting more emails than you were three weeks ago from the school about the number of close contacts that could have happened. And so just again, be diligent. We've got tests, test at home, keep a child home if they're not feeling well, and monitor symptoms and do everything. All that information is still on our district webpage. If you just hit in the beginning, the COVID-19 update, anybody who's got questions, I think your answer is there. But if not, pick up the phone, call the nurse, call our office, and we'll work you through anything. All right.
Board? Great. Thank you.
I'm going to put more slides in because I realize you make me talk more when I just have one slide. So next time, I'll do a bunch.
There we go.
I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Maloney, who's going to provide an instructional update for the elementary and middle school schedules for next year.
All right. Good evening, everybody. As you will remember, at last month's meeting, I shared some of the drafts and ideas that we had put out for the elementary and middle school schedules, and I'd like to provide an update on that. So let me start by saying, it is each year, we take a look at our schedules, we tweak, we make revisions. That is normal. What is different this year is streamlining and having specific district goals. So our goals are listed here, all six buildings on the same-day rotation. That will allow for faculty and staff to be shared amongst buildings, help staffing challenges. As Dr. Driffo mentioned, the labor shortage is really challenging right now. Fiscal responsibility as staffing is maximized. And then provide consistency for families with students in multiple schools. So the question has come up, what does, being on the same-day rotation, what does that mean? So it would be a one-through-five rotation. So for example, the first day of school next year falls on a Wednesday. It's Wednesday, September seventh, so that would be a day one. The next day, Thursday, September eighth, would be a day two. Friday would be a day three, and then on Monday, it would be a day four. So you can see how having a family with kiddos in multiple schools, it would help to be able to say today is the day four to the whole household. The other piece, the other two goals there, dedicated time for social emotional learning, and I'll get, I'll dig in deeper to that. And then increase the opportunities for job embedded professional development. At the elementary level, we're looking at implementing district-wide common planning for grade-level teachers and special area teachers. So another piece, as we've been working through this, lots of questions, lots of feedback. Another common question is, what's an example of a staffing challenge, which having all six buildings on the same-day rotation would help? So let me give you an example from this year. So a Spanish teacher here at PHS went out on a leave. It's very challenging to find a certified replacement. It's challenging to find subs, daily subs, let alone a certified Spanish teacher. So we had a Spanish teacher from Bay Trail who agreed to teach an extra class and receive compensation. So when we're on the same rotation, that works perfectly, or if it's, the periods fall before or at the beginning or at the end of the day. We had a similar situation in a different department where we had someone who potentially could help, but because of the rotation and the time of day, in the middle of the day, it wasn't possible. So those are some of the options that being on the same rotation would help in terms of staffing challenges. So our process for this, over the last few months, we've gathered feedback from grade level and department teams through building leadership cabinets. We've developed draft schedules in collaboration with building administrators, presented the draft schedules to buildings during April faculty meetings, and then gathered faculty feedback on draft schedules through surveys. And actually, tonight, I'm going to walk you through some of the common themes that we heard in the feedback. Right now, we're, so where that bullet that the wording is read, we're making the modifications based on the feedback that we've received, that we've received. And the plan is to present the revised schedules during May faculty meetings, and then communicate the changes which impact families. And some folks have asked, well, why did you, why did you put, why did you put something out without meeting with teams, without meeting with teams first? We really, we wanted to give, we met with the cabinets, the leadership cabinets, but we wanted to put something in folks' hands that they could vet, that they could poke holes in and ask questions. So let me start with the elementary schedule. So the why, why would, why are we doing this? So consistent programming across the same grade level at all the elementary schools. So when we look across the district at one grade level, for example, there are differences across the four elementary schools. If a fourth grade student starts in September in one elementary building, and then moves to another Penfield Elementary School 15 weeks into the school year, the programming should be comparable. So, and over the years, schedules have shifted due to different implementations of COVID protocols at the buildings, transportation times, parent drop-off pickup, patterns with that. And really, it's time to take a look and see if we can do a reset. So the first draft of the schedule. So the first draft of the schedule, we had music ensembles before the instructional day to avoid students having to choose between ensembles and recess. We increased the specials to 60-minute blocks, and they were created by having a consecutive 40-minute and 20-minute block. These special blocks allowed for daily PE for grades K through 2. In order to make all this fit, lunch was 20 minutes and recess was 20 minutes. And then a dedicated building-wide social emotional learning block that was at the end of the day. And we also built in common planning time across the district for grade-level and special area teachers, so that grade-level teachers, if they have a question, they know that at the same time that they have planning, their colleague who teaches the same grade level in another elementary building has planning, so they can jump on teams or pick up the phone and... Feedback. So let's take a minute and go through some of the feedback. There were three questions on the survey. The first question, what are aspects of the draft schedule which you like? And you'll see consistency across the four elementary buildings. You're going to see, these are the common themes. The process afforded the opportunity for faculty to ask questions and provide feedback. People really appreciated the opportunity to give their input, to give their feedback. The common planning time across the district. Implementing, people liked the idea of being able to connect with their colleague across the district. One teacher, who is the only NL teacher in her building, she was very excited to be able to collaborate, she'd be able to connect with her other NL colleagues. A dedicated social emotional learning block of time. Teachers appreciated ensuring that there was time in the day for that social emotional block. It made sure that there was that dedicated time. The increased time for the special areas. Some folks commented, they liked the idea of ensembles before the day, because it allows for students to attend recess. The daily PE at grades 2, folks liked. And then this was an interesting piece of feedback that I hadn't considered. Timing of this rollout allows for planning over the summer. Often, teachers don't know the specifics around their schedule until mid to late summer. So this, this way, they would know and be able to plan over the summer. So remember our process. We shared a draft through the survey and asked faculty members to give their feedback. At the elementary level, we had a great response to the survey. We had 86 responses, with some teachers responding as grade-level teams. So the whole team sat down and completed the survey together. My team has gone through each piece of feedback multiple times, and we're continuing to modify the first draft based on the feedback. And in a few minutes, I'll show you kind of where we're at right now. So what questions do you have regarding the draft schedule? This was the second question on the survey. Can the social emotional learning block be moved to the morning? This is a great way to start the day, many teachers already do this. Some of the buildings already had that time built in, in the morning, so this was a common piece of feedback. With all students, will all students be able to attend music ensembles before the school day? If not, is that equitable for all students? So we had been able to secure transportation, Penfield transportation. We didn't have the same level of commitment with urban suburban. So you'll see, I'm going to talk about the ensembles in a minute, but this is a great question. Can lunch and recess be longer? Remember that original draft, it was 20 minutes and 20 minutes. Concerns, there were some common concerns with the 60-minute special block being split into 40 and 20-minute blocks. So at the grades 3 through 5, there was a common theme that the library time wasn't long enough. And for those 20-minute blocks, we were looking to use TAs to cover during those 20-minute blocks. And with the staffing shortages and the sub shortages, TAs are often pulled to cover classes, and folks were concerned that we wouldn't be able to make this all work just from a logistics perspective. If there is a fifth section at a grade level, how will that class be scheduled for specials? So typically, there are four sections at a grade level, in a few cases, there are five. Is it possible to have equitable planning time for classroom teachers, interventionists, and special area teachers? Is this change necessary? Can we wait? The third question on the survey, what suggestions do you have regarding the schedule? Move the social emotional learning block to the morning. Lengthen lunch and recess. Move core ELA to the morning for primary grades, this was a common theme. This next one, connect RTI math and RTI ELA to core. Just as many people who shared that piece of feedback shared, do not connect RTI math and RTI ELA to core. Create a single block for specials instead of 40 and 20-minute, the split block. Convene a committee of elementary faculty to develop a schedule over the course of next year for implementation the following year in '23, '24. And hire more staff as opposed to sharing staff. So these were the suggestions. So where we are right now, the most recent draft, the social emotional learning block, we've moved to the morning. We've lengthened, right now, we're at an hour for lunch and recess, so combined, it adds up to an hour. Core ELA, we've moved to the morning for primary grades. Again, this is all still in draft. We've created a single 45-minute block for specials instead of that 60-minute block split into 40 and 20 minutes. And ensembles are going to occur during the instructional day. Not only was the transportation a concern, but there were also concerns raised over the impact to the Suzuki program. So I want to make sure that folks know, there's no changes in the Suzuki program. We also, it allowed us to, by putting, by removing ensembles from outside of the school day, interestingly enough, allowed us to move the SEL block into the morning as opposed to at the end of the day. And then just a reminder of our process. So right now, we're making modifications based on the feedback. And then that next bullet there, that is where the wording is read, we're planning to present the modified schedules during the May faculty meeting. So some of the feedback that we had heard at the elementary level was that people really appreciated having the information shared in person. So I, myself and the directors, went to each of the buildings and presented the information. Teachers appreciated that. But because of the rotation of the elementary buildings, faculty meetings, there's always going to be a building that hears the information first, and there's always going to be a building that hears the information last. So to, for fairness, we have scheduled a, we have canceled the building faculty meetings, and we have combined for an optional meeting where I'll review where the schedule's at. It's a joint meeting for all of the elementary teachers. It will be held at Bay Trail, so everyone can hear the information at the same time, and we don't have one building hearing or getting the information before another. And that will take place next week. I want to be sure to mention that, in terms of the elementary schedule, still working with principals, I meet with principals and directors tomorrow to review the latest draft and the presentation that's going to go for the elementary faculties. Okay, let's shift to middle school. So again, let's talk about the why. A common piece of feedback that we hear frustrations from families, that their child who needs academic interventions has to miss a special area class to receive those interventions. And we really look to avoid this in the new schedule. Faculty also shared frustrations with no common time to support students' academics. With COVID, Bay Trails had to change their schedule multiple times, and home base has been removed. So in the past, Bay Trail ran a home base period at the end of the day, in which teachers were available to provide academic support to their students. Currently, Bay Trail is running advisory periods, and the faculty shared frustrations with the advisory periods and not having common time to support their students. So as you will recall, when I was reviewing the slide around the process, when I met with the Bay Trail leadership team, and they had gathered feedback from their departments, this was a common frustration around not being able to support their students when their students needed academic help. And then this, the ELA standards, so across the board, K-12, the ELA standards are banded, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Currently, 6th grade has an ELA course and a 6th grade reading course. The 6th grade ELA course teaches the 6th grade writing, speaking, and listening standards, and the 6th grade reading course teaches the reading standards. So 6th grade is the only level, K-12, to have the reading standards taught separately from the writing, speaking, and listening standards. Yet, the grade-level performance on standardized tests does not stand out when compared to other grade levels. So this chart here shows the ranking of each grade level when compared to the other 10 districts in our Monroe-Wembosse, the other nine districts, excuse me, we make 10. So you'll see that the rank there is comparable to the other grade levels. And I want to be sure that I make it known, this is no fault of the teachers, this was a programmatic decision which was made a number of years ago. So let's talk about the first draft of the schedule. Nine periods, each 40 minutes in length, a 40-minute lunch with a lunch and recess a block of 40 minutes. Sixth grade programming shift to allow for students to receive targeted ELA reading and math interventions, similar to the elementary intervention model. We maintained grade-level department common planning and grade-level house common planning, that was another piece that was important to teachers when I worked with their leadership team. And then we built in a flex period, it's similar to the former home base. But the teachers at Bay Trail have been talking and sharing feedback around the, seeing an increase in behaviors in the hallways. This could be attributed to some of the social dynamics from COVID. This could be also because students don't seem to be using their lockers as much anymore, they have their backpacks and their computers are in their backpacks. So we created, one of the frustrations with home base was a lot of the unstructured time. And by doing, by putting in a flex period by grade level, that allows for less students in the hall and during that transition during an unstructured time. The other piece, in the, two pieces, in the first draft of the schedule, New York State mandates 1.75 credits of career technical education. And at Bay Trail, those courses fall under technology, business, family, and consumer science. So we shifted, and you can see there, the shift that we made for the CTE courses. And then at 8th grade, we proposed electives for students not in music ensembles, so they could choose from business, family, consumer science, art, music, and those courses would be 10 or 20 weeks. So faculty feedback, again, I'll go through the common themes of the feedback for you. Same questions, what are the aspects of the draft schedule which you like? And the response at Bay Trail was in the 50s in terms of the number of folks that responded. So what are aspects of the draft schedule which you like? Student choice with electives at 8th grade came up. The possibility for more enrichment opportunities, when you look at the flex block, as well as potentially when the interventions are being offered. Grade-level department and team common planning has been maintained. This came up frequently, and I think this, this probably goes back to Bay Trail folks having, many folks have worked in different models since Bay Trails had multiple schedules over the last few years. Teachers like having contact with students every day, as opposed to seeing them every other day or every third day. Teach, excuse me, students can receive interventions without having to miss a special area class. Bringing back a flex period with intervention, academic support, and SEL possibilities. And then having choice in their administrative duty, like PHS, this is specific to the teachers and their contractual obligations. And then the shortening of passing time, and I put a little asterisk there, because this was an idea that came up in the, in the feedback, and we actually, we actually implemented it and put out another draft to the faculty. So I'll show you that in just a second. What questions do you have regarding the draft schedule? Is it possible to offer art in 7th grade? Can we make structural changes to the schedule and wait a year to implement the electives? This would allow for time for the elective courses to be designed. Can a visual of the proposed schedule be shared? Clarification around what exactly would be expected of teachers during their administrative duties? Can passing time be shortened? Clarification of the structure of flex time? What's going to occur during flex time? How's that going to look? Are students just going to be allowed to roam the building? Obviously not, but what would be the expectations of students? Can these changes wait until a new principle is in place? Clarification on recess, again, concerns around unstructured time. And then how does the current enrichment model fit in this new schedule? All great questions. Suggestions, these are, these are great as well. What suggestions do you have regarding the schedule? Wait a year to implement the electives. Structure flex using the positive attributes of home base. Shorten passing time. Shorten lunch, we had originally proposed the 40-minute lunch with recess. And continue to offer all specials for the three years of middle school. So as I mentioned, shorten the passing time as well as the lunch, that came up, it was very frequent in the feedback, and right in the initial feedback that we were getting, as well as the question of can we see a visual? So I worked with the team at Bay Trail, and we put together the schedule. There's already some other changes that have been suggested that we will be working on, but this, you'll see where the 40-minute class periods are, and then but this, you'll see where the 40-minute class periods are, and then this had proposed 20-minute lunches. The team has already made a decision moving forward around that, so that's in revision. But you can kind of see the structure. So the most recent draft, we provided the visual of the schedule structure. We shortened the passing time to four minutes. We shortened lunches to 20 minutes with 20 minutes for recess. We're looking, that's something that we're still working on with food service, actually. Restructuring flex based on the positive attributes of home base, still defining and working on what can be offered during that flex time for students. The 6th grade programming shift to allow for students to receive targeted ELA math and reading interventions similar to the elementary intervention model, and how that will be accomplished. The 6th grade ELA course will integrate all 6th grade ELA standards, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. So this most recent draft, we also made some shifts based on feedback, working with the departments with, that offer CTE courses. So you'll see there's a little bit of a shift. Students will receive art instruction in 6th and 7th grade with the option for the 8th grade elective and to take art as an 8th grade elective. And then the 8th grade electives, the possibility to offer to all students as opposed to only students who are not in ensembles, we're still looking at that to see if we could, if we can make that work. So this is a visual that shows you, what's highlighted yellow is what was changed from the original draft that was shared. The question keeps coming up around what are the requirements? What are the requirements from New York State? So the New York State requirements for CTE is 1.75 credits. For art, it's a .5 credit. For music, it's a .5 credit over 7th and 8th grade. Same is true for art over 7th and 8th grade. So you can see how we've, bless you, how we've built those in. And then the process, again, just a reminder, we're making the modifications based on the feedback. These schedules are still in draft form. I am meeting tomorrow with the teachers who would potentially be teaching the electives to keep working through that process. I meet weekly with the Bay Trail administrators to keep working on this. I've met with the PEA reps at both levels. I'm working tomorrow, excuse me, Thursday with the elementary PEA reps. So really trying to be collaborative in this process to make changes and listen to the feedback. And I think it's also important to note, there are no staffing cuts that are being made. I do want to share, there has been a lot of community feedback on what is social emotional learning, and I think it would be helpful to give some background and some information, particularly around what does that social emotional learning block look like at the elementary level? So from the state ed, and I'm going to share some websites with families and some resources, but New York State published a document in March of 2019, and it's titled "The Social Emotional Learning: A Guide to Systemic Whole School Implementation." And these two quotes, I thought really, really capture what social emotional learning is. So the first quote, "Social emotional learning is the process through which children, youth, and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions." And then the second quote there, "Social emotional learning is essential to creating schools that effectively prepare all students to succeed in school and in life." So just a little bit of history, the Board of Education, for as long as I can remember, has had a longstanding goal of supporting the development of the whole student. And in 2017, the district partnered with the Children's Institute to perform a social emotional learning needs assessment. And that, the results of that assessment are on our website. One of the recommendations, particularly at the elementary level, was to identify and implement a consistent social emotional learning curriculum or instructional practices for all four district elementary schools. And this work was started, Marcy Ware tells me all the time about the work that the four principals at the time, they would meet on a regular basis with the Children's Institute to begin to flush this out, and then COVID hit, and so that was put on pause. We are going to continue our partnership with the Children's Institute to create a social emotional learning toolkit for teachers. So the social emotional, the block, the social emotional learning block at the elementary building, we don't want to dictate every day, this is what you have to do, this is what you have to say, you have to follow the script. We really want teachers to have the flexibility to utilize this time as they best see fit. So we talked about morning meeting. Many teachers already do morning meeting. It's that time on the circle when you get to build those relationships, check in with your kiddos, ask how they're doing, talk about the weekend. Second Step lessons. So we've had Second Step, it's a social emotional learning curricula. We've had it since we went to implementation of full-day kindergarten. Teachers will tell you, when I was doing these presentations at one of the buildings, a teacher raised her hand and said, Leslie, I remember when the kit was dropped off to me, I never have time to teach. I'm so excited that I have time to teach, there will be time to teach this. Second Step is a one-time-a-week lesson. The lessons on Aaron's Law content, this past year, we used Bavona. Bavona came in and partnered with us to deliver that content. Our Delphi Rise counselor can push in and support students and provide lessons. School-wide and grade-level assemblies that we're so excited to bring back that we have missed so much from COVID and all that the guest speakers and the community partnerships, our anti-bullying lessons, our anti-bullying assemblies, our concerts, our guest speakers, the Monroe County sheriffs, the DARE program, the Penn Field Fire Company when they bring the fire trucks, the Penn Field Volunteer Ambulance. Age-appropriate play, a teacher at one of the buildings said, Leslie, would this be a time that we could get out the, because so much of the materials have been stored with COVID, can we get back out the toy store and run a market? And can we get back out some of the kitchen and some of the things, the dramatic play that they haven't been able to do, and this would be a dedicated time? Read aloud, specific to social skills. I think about the Fill Your Bucket book and all the social skills that go with read alouds. Community-building circles, many of our teachers, if you go in the morning, just across the four elementaries in your visiting classrooms, you'll see teachers engaging in community-building circles. It's really about building that time, making that connection with students. And I think, I just wanted to provide families with some clarification on what that is. I also wanted to provide families with two resources. So the New York State Education Department has, and I put QR codes, I put the links. If you're watching at home, the QR code works. You can just open up your camera and it'll take you right to the website. And take a look at the benchmarks by grade level. If you're wondering, it's right at the top, and you can see specifically the social emotional learning skills that your child, and by grade level, how they progress. And then Second Step has a great page for families. It's very informative. There's the link there. In the middle of the page, there is probably the best video of what SEL is. It's right in the middle of the page. It'll take you to YouTube. It's a great video. It talks about the benefits of SEL from a research perspective. There's also sample lessons for each grade level, K through 5 as well as 6 through 8, but I know we're talking about 6 through, or excuse me, K through 5. So that is an update on the schedules, kind of where we're at. So we're still working through it, and are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, board members. Any questions? Go ahead, I see you leaning.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. So as an elementary teacher, especially going through this pandemic, I think we put a lot of pressure on ourselves to really move our kids academically. And I can appreciate the fact that we are, our elementary teachers are going to have that block of time dedicated for that because I think it takes that pressure off of, it's okay to do it because I think we always, this is where we need to get our kids, this is where we need to get our children. But truth be told, we're not going to get them there if their SEL is not in place. So from an elementary teacher perspective, I think it'll alleviate some stress and help everyone's SEL, and therefore, it's what's best for kids, so.
I just want to mention that, I appreciate that comment. It's so interesting when we look at the four elementary schedules, they're very different. All four elementary schedules right now are different. Although the buses arrive at the same time, when they start and when they end is a little different and how they adjust their time. So there are buildings now, Cobble's being one that has had an SEL block in their schedule, but not all of them have. So I know, I hear that in terms of how do we put that time in? Because right now, a lot of that list, when you talk about like the DARE program, which isn't being offered this year by Monroe County sheriffs, they're reworking their program, it'll be something else. We look forward to partnering with Monroe County Sheriff as we always do. But at the end of the day, that time would have to come from somewhere else. So you wouldn't do math, so you could do your DARE program, or you wouldn't do ELA potentially, so you could get your Second Step in. And that's really difficult. If you believe in it, we dedicate. But I love that it's in the morning. I think that feedback was great because it's also that morning meeting. Kids come off the bus in all different ways, and being able to connect quickly and help de-escalate some and rev others up, it's great. But I think that list helps too of all the things that could fit in there. It's not scripted in a way that it's all lockstep. Still has lots of teacher choice.
Actually, I have two questions, but you answered one about elective, so it sounds like you guys are doing some more work on that, so we'll check that off. More to come, I'm sure. Can you speak a little bit about the integration of the ELA at 6th grade? Do you expect summer, like curriculum work for, to make that work out?
Yeah, so actually, our Director of Humanities, Sheena Conway, has been working with the teams, and I believe that they already, there was already time set aside for curriculum work, but I have said that anything, any of the projects that were already planned or that need to be planned because of these schedule modifications, that I will work to either increase the time or we can, we can shift and make things because it's important that teachers have the time to develop any curricula that they need.
Thank you.
Barb?
As a former sports staff, retired sports staff person, I think this is amazing because I, as that support piece, see that piece of Penn Field's team pushing in, doing a lot more, not a lot, being able to do more push-in and more integrated stuff. And that just gives me goosebumps, so.
Thank you all.
Well, I would just like to say, first off, I think you took care of the shortage, the slide shortage for Tom. I will say though, you and the whole administration, you have a very deliberate, thoughtful process in how you're doing this. I mean, you know, how you've gone through this in multiple steps, and it's not always apparent to the outside world, and, because this is really internal development, and there's, and part of the process is getting input, and that happens when it needs to happen. You know, there's the right time for input when it can be effectively implemented and processed, and there's a time where it can be somewhat distracting. So I do applaud you for one building in, really a couple of places for input of different, for different folks, going out to the teachers, to the buildings, and meeting with them in person, and making all those adjustments that you made. But you know, the end goal is a better process, and when you come up with process changes, it's not going to be, you know, it's not going to be just right the first time around. You know, there is a, you have ideas, you work through it, you get input, you make changes, you realize there's better ways. But that's just the nature of it, and I would be disappointed if we just sort of sat with what we had and didn't try to do this and make a, make a better process, like you say, having everybody on the same schedule, being able to have better use the teachers and the resources we have. So, you know, it is a process, and it's sometimes a little messy, but the thing is, in the end, we have to work through it, trust that we're going to work, try to get the right outcome, and you know, next year, we might tweak it a little more because we will learn something from that. So I applaud you and everybody for all the work they've done in trying to make the schools operate better.
As mentioned, Mark, and as Leslie touched upon it, but a huge thank you to our building faculties in terms of the feedback they provided and the time, you know, Leslie's office is across from mine, so I get to see it, but I mean, nonstop review and listening and reaching back out. So her and her office and our directors have met with so many teachers trying to dig in and hear and try to, and try to fix. So like that ensemble, ensembles in the morning, you know, Penn Field Transportation could do it, other districts have done it. We were working out of Leslie's office with Urban Suburban to make sure that no kid would be left behind, that everybody would get a bus. But ultimately, you know, our concern is around transportation and then the impact of Suzuki. You know, the board believes strongly in Suzuki program. I do as a parent, no musical talent, but my kids can play an instrument thanks to the Suzuki program. But it's so interesting because I learned a lot because I'm a Cobble's parent, so I figured Suzuki was in the morning across the district. I just never knew that in some buildings, it's actually in the afternoon. So it's just an interesting piece as we dig through and hear concerns, and I can't thank teachers enough and faculty enough for also sharing real feedback in there and suggestions, and appreciate, you know, Leslie, it's all that messiness that Mark talks about, but this is our process, and we're still working in draft mode and go back out in May and keep fine-tuning as we look at it. That concludes superintendent reports.
All right, thank you. Okay, where are we? We jumped down, I believe, to number nine. Yes, thank you. Textbook approval. We have the book, ELA book posted for grade level 6, is recommended that the board approve the recommended textbook as presented on April 12, 2022. So may I have a second, a motion and a second that we approve that textbook?
Some more.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And this is the reading of the policies for, the second reading, sorry, the policies for second reading and approval. Is recommended the board approve the policies as presented. You have that list there, that list is available. This was discussed at our previous meeting. Was there any questions or input on those policy changes?
There was, the only input came from a member of the board, and it was really just grammar and tweaking, so no language change, but just sort of cleaning it up. So I appreciate board members who reach out and share that feedback, but no other input.
All right, hopefully the board members are happy with this, so may I have a motion and a second that the policy, the above policy needs to be approved or presented.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to visitor speaking time. We as the board appreciate the comments of the community during the public session of the Board of Education. Every individual that speaks has a vested interest in the education of our students. The comments are important to us, but matters involving particular individuals or specifics in negotiations are not permitted during public session. Concerns raised will be referred to the district administration for follow-up or action when appropriate. Visitors may sign up to speak by emailing the district clerk, Sharon Ergoff, with their name, address, phone number, and topic for which they wish to address. Registration will be open from 8:00 a.m. on the Friday before the meeting and remain open until 3:00 p.m. on the Tuesday of the board meeting. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting and limit their comments to three minutes or less. A total time of 30 minutes will be allotted for visitor speaking time. The board will not be responding to the comments during this session, but please be sure that we are listening. Finally, we ask that all speakers model the conduct that we expect from our students in school daily. Please be respectful of others in your words, conduct, and demeanor. Thank you. So, we have three speakers, first one being Jocelyn Berman. Ms. Berman, please state your name and address.
Jocelyn Berman, 27 Sawmill Drive. I had a lot more on lunches, I'm going to cut it, because thank you for expanding the elementary lunches. But, I would challenge anyone in the administration supporting shorter lunches, to please follow a class from their classroom through the lunch line to their table, and see how much time they actually have to eat their meals. I was saddened to hear the district is phasing out honors programs. I realize AP classes are expected to backfill, but honors serve a purpose and should be restructured if they're insufficient. How will that make struggling students in combined classes feel to see advanced students pick up material so quickly? How will advanced students feel knowing the pace of the class is determined by the student having the most difficult time? How will teachers plan their lessons when they have to bridge this gap? Students don't all have the same needs, and even with infinite resources, students will never all have the same outcome, because everyone is different. We should be providing help where they need it, and challenging them where they need it. Our goal should not be cookie cutter education. A big part of what's causing anxiety for these kids is uncertainty. Are they going to have to wear masks again? Are they going to go virtual again? There's, they're always waiting for the other shoe to drop. What they need is consistency. The starting point should be the schedule they had before COVID. Please consider the ramifications of more drastic changes to their school day. I realize New York State has mandated new requirements that we have to implement, and I know the school really wants synchronized schedules and more SEL time. Please remember music, art, and even lunch and recess are also SEL time. Is it necessary to change the entire schedule next year and make the kids all acclimate again? I know how ugly last year got, many people were publicly and personally attacked, and those wounds are still healing. All I'm asking is that you include us, hear us, collaborate with us, send us surveys. Find out in advance how families or students or beloved programs might be affected by proposed changes, rather than just notifying us of the impact after implementation per the process slide. Not for every little thing, but rearranging the entire schedule and dropping entire programs are major changes for which we deserve consideration. Respect is a pillar that has been lost by both sides over the last couple of years, and it needs to be rebuilt. One parent described our music program as the crown jewel of the district. Thank you for making the necessary changes to preserve the music programs in their current state. I hope we keep it that way. There was a tremendous showing of respect on your part, and so now I want to reciprocate by thanking you for hearing us. Let's keep that momentum going and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berman. The next speaker is Francesca Lancer. Hello, Ms. Lancer, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Francesca Lancer, 51 Brentwood Drive. On April 20, district families received a note, which was sent to address the recent rumors regarding the music program, where the following statement was made. The Suzuki program is not being eliminated. What, that is just wonderful. The music thing was blown way out of proportion. The administration has our back. They said everything's fine, it must be. Prior to my involvement in the Suzuki program, I would have accepted that email at face value. I would have thought all was well. I trusted our administration. I am a Suzuki parent, and because of my work schedule, I am only able to attend lessons before school. The statement that Suzuki is not being eliminated is factual, but it's not accurate. It fails to mention that moving ensembles to the before-school time block would effectively disintegrate the Suzuki program. Why not state the entire truth? We don't need this administration to spin the facts into a comfortable story that makes us believe everything is all right. We need transparency. Provide us with a view into more than just your recommendations. Provide us a view into the dissenting opinions and your reasons behind the decisions you make. Good ideas can stand up to scrutiny. Thankfully, music in our schools appears to be back on track. But, how do we avoid these missteps and the messiness, as you mentioned, in the future? My attempt to simply understand the issue generated a few ideas that I think might help. I started by reading district emails, I searched the websites, I even watched the Board of Ed meetings for the last year. I could not gather a complete picture of this issue. I contacted the administration, but I never received any responses or emails in reply. I talked to teachers, and parents, and friends in the community, and I formulated my own understanding. It is no wonder that rumors are circulating, and people are frustrated. Do you need more examples? Watch the Meet the Candidates presentation. Just listen to the section regarding the honors program. It was as though each person was addressing a completely different issue. One was talking about AP, one was addressing honor role, still another was referring to honors regents. What is the full picture regarding honors program discussions? And why is it being considered for elimination? That baseline information needs to be provided by you, our administration, and should be readily available to all of us. It is this administration's responsibility to provide that starting point for our discussions, a place where teachers, students, and community members can get to a basic understanding of the question being addressed. I recommend the following. Throw a Google Doc up on the website, list out the pressing topics the district is currently grappling with, give us the question and supporting facts in the first section, in the second section, include what the teachers and other subject matter experts have said, let us know the results of your surveys, and your thoughts regarding the issues. Have it be a living, breathing document. Countless community hours were wasted trying to sort out the schedule changes. Many district hours have been spent trying to rebuild community trust, all of which could have been avoided with more transparent communication.
Thank you, Ms. Lancer.
You have this information at your fingertips, please share it. Having a universal starting point will help us work together. We might actually realize we agree on many things.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lancer.
Thank you.
The final present speaker, or the final person is Dana Mar. Good evening, Ms. Mar, please state your name and address.
Yep, Dana Mar, 1690 Cultural Road. All right, so May is Mental Health Awareness Month. With that, bullying is a huge issue, and very, very important. I am hosting an event this week on Don Saturday, with the gentleman who goes by the character name Sergeant Push Up, and he's going to talk about bullying with kids that come to this event. So, I wanted to share information on that, I think it's going to be a great event for our community. I look forward to seeing what he presents, he's going to do 1,000 push-ups at this event, which is really great. He goes across the country doing this, to raise awareness for bullying as well as hunger for kids, so he's also going to be doing a fundraiser for that. And, so, the event is going to be the first hour and a half, is going to be the 1,000 push-ups, and then he's going to break it out into, by age group, grade level. So, the first group will be K through 5, and then the next group will be 6 through 8, and then the next group will be 9 through 12. And there'll be each three 45-minute sessions of those bully discussions. So, looking really forward to that, and I'm hopeful for a really positive impact on the community. He's a veteran, and just really looking to make a difference across the country. So, I'm hoping to be able to, to help support that. Something I actually wanted to do back in the fall, that I never was able to get going, so I'm really thrilled that I'm able to do that now. And then, I also just wanted to kind of echo on the importance of the music programming. I think about mental health, and I think how valuable music can be in supporting the emotional health of our students as well, so, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Mar. This concludes the visitor speaking time. Now, we go to the Monroe County School Board Association Committee Meetings. First up was information exchange.
Okay, give me one second.
Certainly.
So, I couldn't make it to the meeting, and so I zoomed in, and couldn't hear anything at all, nothing. I sat there, like, is this volume going to work, or is, and it just was a complete failure. So, what I did was, I printed out the minutes to the meeting, and I can just tell you what it was about, but if you are interested in watching the meeting, it's on the School Board Association website. So, it was, the guest was Linda Augustin, Executive Director of Systems Integration Project. She presented an update on the project to this, the group. The Systems Integration Project began in 2017 to redesign the current state of services, of resource-rich, results-poor, in order to improve access to programs and services based on the direct needs of the community. Congressman Joe Morelli and Regent Wade Norwood are the co-chairs of the project. Monroe County School Board Association represents board members on the Systems Integration Steering Team, and Joanne Antinachi and Dan White represent both school districts and the State Education Department on the team. Okay. Laura explained the evolution of the project, the impact that COVID had on the project. COVID provided a moment in time when the vision of the project could be put to the task to help the community through the pandemic, and resulted in some pilots for housing, food, and vaccinations. But, it also put the project as a whole on pause. So, now it's back, Laura's provided a list of accomplishments to date, as process wins and delivery wins. So, that's just the basic, you know, rundown, and I apologize, I don't have anything more. I didn't have a chance to sit and watch the meeting again. I sat through it once, and like strained to hear, but it's all there.
Questions for Catherine?
I'd just say, thank you, I was at the executive committee meeting last week.
Did you?
And we got a thinner version of what you got.
Okay.
Similar stuff, but not quite as much detail, and I was going to speak to that as well. I think the main thing is that we will hear more about this, and the community will hear more about this, as it gets, goes from development to pilot, which is really starting to pilot, to really full-blown implementation, and how it integrates all the services, the information related to the services, and just makes it less of a bureaucratic runaround for people who are in need of community services. It helps those organizations, they still own their services, but they can work together and share information and coordinate information as permitted by the recipient. And, the one thing about this is that it helps the school, because the school now will have a place, the district will have a place to kind of push into that, if we have people who need to be introduced into that system for services. It makes it easier for us to get them integrated, and it's, again, less of a bureaucratic runaround. They can go straight into those places.
There was, though, you kind of touched on it, that, you know, that it's, you're hearing more about it. There was a great deal of interest in that topic. There was a lot of back and forth, and I was getting frustrated, because I really wanted to hear what they were talking about. The meeting went a little longer, you know, there was a lot of interaction, a lot of back and forth, so, more to come.
Yep. Yes, definitely more to come. Labor relations.
That would be me, and it was my last labor relations meeting. It's okay, it's okay, it's okay. And, it was on RASHP, which is our shared consortium, thank you. And so, I'm going to hand it over to Dan, because you understand it so much better than I do, because you're involved in it. And, we can also have Dr. Kenny also fill in, because I just, it's, there's so much stuff.
So, it was an annual update for the Monroe County School Board Association for RASH, that's the Rochester Area School Health Plan. Always a funny acronym to talk about healthcare with RASH as that acronym. So, it was the annual update, the consortium lead consultant, Charles McLaughlin from Gallagher Consulting was there to present, we could get the materials for the board if you're interested. The highlights were that the cost savings saw in 2020, based on the delays of procedures, and basically people staying out of the hospital unless it was a requirement. Some of those savings were eaten into in 2021, where the consortium actually had a little bit of a loss. So, the Q4 2021, very expensive quarter, early indications for Q1 2022 is that things are projecting still at a pretty good clip, a lot of people are maybe getting things done that they had put off a little bit. He went through all of the COVID numbers in the consortium, so how many tests were done for folks in the consortium, how many confirmed cases there were, what were the associated costs associated with COVID care. So, it was an enlightening presentation, but I won't go any further into the details.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. And then the last one's the Legislative Committee, which is myself, but that's actually tomorrow night, so we will cover that at the next meeting. Then, as far as district committee meetings, it's the DEI Core Committee Meeting. Would someone like to speak to that?
Sure. So, it was a short meeting yesterday, and it was really, Sheena Conway just went over the curriculum and instruction piece. So, she went over, she kind of took us through a day of their professional development. It was awesome, just to hear all that was put into it, and all of the opportunities that the, the teachers had to, you know, learn, one, and then, you know, just to have that discussion on what's being done, and what, you know, they're learning from it, and how they can implement it in the classroom. I think that it was great. I did have something else. And then they were able to, they were led through a restorative circle, to kind of unpack, again, all of the learning that they went through, and they looked at the culturally responsive and sustaining framework, and used that lens to kind of look at what's being taught in the curriculum, which I think is great. You know, we talk about people wanting, you know, us to move a lot faster, and some people not wanting us to go as fast as we're going, which, anyways, I think that it's great just to hear the progress that's being made, and I think it's something that I shared, you know, I think the community needs to hear too, so that they know where we're going. Because I think, you know, they hear these, what we want to do, and maybe where we're going a little bit, but actually to see what the, what the professional development is, I think, would be huge. What do you think?
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo that, it was, it was really powerful to see Sheena take us through a PD day, and really just, I think for me, the big meat of it was just really digging into curriculum that can be really sensitive for some of our stakeholders, and really just thinking about how we can end words that could be offensive to some children, like how can we just shift how we say one word can really make all the difference? I think that would just be really helpful for our community members that aren't sitting in the classroom every day, to really understand what that really looks like, so, it was, it was pretty powerful.
I'd just add, being there, it was a short meeting, which is always nice, but that professional development for our staff is really like grade level. So, for example, she used like 4th grade, bringing 4th grade to get together. In 4th grade across New York State, there's lessons around slavery. And so, in this day and age, teachers don't want to say the wrong thing. They want to make sure that they're, they're talking through the, the history and what happened, but in a way that's culturally responsive for students who are there. So, I want to use an example, because I think it's so important, is like, even around terminology, and it's small on one piece, from one angle, as a history teacher, I think it's really important. So, even the term slave versus really the, the shift to like enslaved. So, you know, people don't wake up and decide one day to be a slave, and, and it really was something that was done to people, whether it's American history or Roman history. It's, it's really the enslaved people. And so, just those small pieces of making sure that we support teachers, resources they need, conversations, and really, in this day and age, being able to come together and have those conversations from teachers, and I got to sit through one part of the PD around just like asking really good questions, like, you know, is this right? Is this good? Is this, am I going to, you know, work through this? And, we've had in our district and other districts, it's in the news right now, it's about reenacting things that are harmful. You know, you know, when I was in high school, there were slave reenactments, and you had to act out what it was like. That's harmful, that, that is not, it's not appropriate to do today. And, you'll see, I mean, local districts in the news, because those things still happen. So, for them to stop and really think and be thoughtful, like why do we teach it? How do we teach something is really important. And what's amazing about Penfield teachers is at the end of the day, it's just about not causing harm and how do we work through sort of the redoing our curriculum? Again, the state standard's still there, the learning's still happening. It's just the language that's used and how it's presented, as well as what can we look at in terms of stories that might not have been told. So it's, you know, it's, it's that piece of just, and I appreciate Emily mentioning, you know, it's, it's, there's people across our nation who want to just teach the way we all learned in school and others who want something completely different. We're Penfield, we're taking our time, we're looking at it, we're digging in, we're not changing curriculum overnight. It's conversations like this, just to continue keeping that door open for how do we make sure that all students, regardless of who they are, every kid comes to school very individual. No kid is exactly like, I'm married to twin, twins aren't exactly alike, they're all different, they all bring their own perspective. How do we make sure we honor and support that, as well as keep our high standards in academics to support kids? Because the New York State standards are still our benchmark, we're pushing forward with all the academics that we need for our kids. So long meet, or short meeting, long presentation tonight about it.
Yeah, I think it all just comes back to what's best for kids.
Absolutely.
That's why we do what we do, and I think that when, what we're doing is what's best for kids.